The Planning Commission meeting in February 21 to order. As much as this is our organizational meeting for the year, I'll get us started and then we'll go from there. It does appear that we have a forum.
Yay.
First on the prepared agenda is adoption of agenda. I hear a motion to adopt the agenda is presented. Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Mr. Brown.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is election of officers. We'll take the chairman first.
Mr. County Administrator, I am confused with our seating here tonight.
I don't know. I feel like I'm Mr. Trump. I'm asking about stuff in the balance. So can I have an understanding of, we have two board supervisors or has the organization of the Planning Commission and regulations changed and we have two board members now sitting with us?
There is indeed one appointment from the board to the Planning Commission. There is some confusion and debate over who the current appointee is based on your ordinance that reads that board appointments are for failure of terms. So this came up with the PZA rep as well. Practice has not followed code over the last many years and I suspect that that will be corrected with code amendment to bring code in line closer to practice.
So tonight, do we have two votes from the board supervisors? One vote? Do they vote the same? Is one non-voting? Do we vote them out?
There are certainly questions that I don't have the answer to relative to that.
Well, I guess then if you have no answer to us and we have this dilemma, I think the only thing we can do is to have you direct this meeting until this is resolved next month or a quarter long.
I don't think that would be appropriate. I think you do need to elect a chair and vice chair. If there is question as to the vote, then I think that's when there would be potential to reconsider when and if there is a legal issue.
Well, it's for commission personnel here.
At least.
So who votes and gets out to the supervisors tonight?
Technically, the board has a single vote and...
Well, we got two people here technically.
That is very true and I'm not in a position to tell either board member who is the right board appointee.
So any decision we make, like any application could be challenged with those voting representation.
I think that depends on what the vote is.
That depends upon whether your side loses or wins.
Oh, I think if it's a narrow majority, I think there's a concern. To the extent that Mr. Parrish and Mr. Frazier align on their votes, I think that takes us out of question.
This is the craziest meeting I've ever seen held around the county and I've never seen any other government agency, public entity have this dilemma. What would we do if we had three senators show up in the US Senate? Or two governors show up? Or two commonwealth administrators show up?
I certainly don't have answer for that. I'm good. It would be great if two came to agreement, but I don't know if that's gonna happen.
If I could interject, if the ordinance is going to be read as it is written and enacted that way, then any votes to the contrary would have been null and void. So that's why they showed up tonight. This is simple. I see.
And I showed up only because Mr. Frazier voted me to be on this board.
I...
That's public record.
You can't legally do something that's wrong, so the vote itself, the motion and second was out of order if it was in violation of our ordinance. Just like if you tried to approve a zoning amendment or a tax amendment or an application that was a violation of one of our ordinances, it would in fact be null and void because it would have been drawn out of order in some way of a way.
Well, I'm surprised to see you here. I'm surprised you didn't call me. You had a time coming.
I had an email to you. You don't read emails?
Yeah.
Well, I thought I made it clear.
I honestly thought you were joking. Because you voted for me to be on this board and now you're sitting here.
Well, you voted for me to be on here two years ago and it's a four-year appointment, so...
Well, how does Mr. Sensi feel? He's in the middle. We violated... He should be here too.
We violated our ordinance. This should have been hashed out three weeks ago, but it didn't. Y'all wanted to live long. So now we have a problem ordering.
And so when did you... I mean, you were on the board for 14 years. When did that period start?
I was appointed... I was appointed to fulfill a two-year term if you're gonna read it the way that it's being enacted all of a sudden and I was appointed to finish the remainder of the term of this term. I was re-elected to be board supervisor in November of 2015. So in 2016, when I started my next four-year term, the board appointed me as the representative for the board of the planning commission. If that's a four-year appointment, I was in the middle of it, I mean, right now. I only served one year as...
I think the only way we can go on legally with the vote tonight, we have a majority of people without the two supervisors and I would simply ask them to abstain from all discussion of vote and we still have a quorum and then we proceed without their participation.
That's logical. And then, but I'm wondering how we're gonna resolve this.
I think you block you two in a room and see who walks out.
We can play monthly page. Best two or three monthly pages.
So it does seem like a reasonable proposal if the board members are in mind to...
Then we should recuse ourselves and leave the table.
That's well...
Still get a forum.
Because it's gonna be awful difficult to sit here and not ask questions, not participate.
Are you offering to do that?
You only talk about doing the appointment of... No, I mean, I won't because you're looking at applications and depending on how they vote, that could be a problem. That makes sense. If it's a question.
That's fine.
That's what I proposed. If you're okay with that.
Oh, yeah. Let's be more real. Just sit out here and... So I thank both the board members for coming to a solution that works for the community that's been waiting. Two meetings without a forum and to have a question for this meeting would be a hardship for me. Thank you. So I think I was asking for nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Brown.
Mr. Ley. Are there any other nominations? Motion to close nominations? Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve Mr. Ley as the chair of the Planning Commission?
You don't need one to take a decision. I so moved.
I'll take a second just to make sure. Is there a second? Second? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Ley, if you were the chair and you were running this meeting, is it okay to stay here or do you just say that I run the show?
I'd like to hear.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Gary Kerr, I'm the county administrator for about a month and a half now and Michelle let me know this morning she wasn't feeling well and midday that she was not feeling able to make it through the day. So you were stuck with me.
Well, thank you for handing that part of the meeting. I believe the next item would be to entertain a nominee to be vice chair.
Nominate Mr. Henry.
I guess I'd like to nominate Mr. Bird. Oh, I guess it's back to me. I'm sorry. Any other nominee? So is it right thing to get a second one in with the nominee? We have a second...
Do you know that they're both interested?
So Gary nominate Chris Bird, I'm interested.
Glad to encourage your interest.
Yes, sir.
I set the second after we...
All right, so just take a second for either one, take them in in any order you want. I think it's been established, we have the second for Mr. Henry. That's certainly the final for me.
So there's no second for Mr. Bird?
So... So while we vote on Mr. Henry as the vice chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So before we get into the rest of tonight's business, I wanted to take a moment, first of all, to thank you guys for, and yeah, for your support and also I wanted to add my voice to the chorus of thanks and praise for my predecessor. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that this commission will meet, will miss the wisdom, the level-headedness and the love of the county and the general sense of fairness and decency that Mr. Settle brought to this position and I could only wish to do half the job that he did and we certainly wish him well in his new pursuits. I think he will represent us well in an important position. So with that, I think we have the agenda. So next item would be to approve the meeting schedule going forward. Minutes are next, I believe, according to, we continue to go by this. So meeting schedule, we've been meeting, as far as I can remember, on the third Wednesday at 7:30. I propose that we continue that tradition and practice unless someone would like to propose otherwise. And the schedule's been provided in your packets, up on the screen or where, and this reflects the third Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, I was curious, that November date, the county closes their offices at noon, it said. I didn't know if we may want to consider moving the meeting. I don't know that staff would wanna wait around from noon to 7:30 to hold the meeting. I don't know what protocol is adopted in the past.
That's a good point. I take it that's the day before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, sure.
So I would entertain a motion to move that meeting to the prior week if that would... I think that would be easier. Ah, I will have that one. Generally, Mondays are available in this room.
But days, but nights?
Nights, right.
Tuesday nights wouldn't be available, might be. I'm thinking also about maybe, if there's any thing on the agenda, even advertising requirements.
Yeah, they would have to back it up, you know, two days earlier.
It will be a difficult, will change the pattern certainly. I guess it's not clear to me at this stage what those implications would be, but presumably we can figure that out between now and November.
Let's just simply pop it up, pop it back to Tuesday.
To the Tuesday?
Yeah, Monday. And if anything's wrong with that, we can change it later.
That's a motion, Mr. Henry. I think it would be a reasonable one. Would there be a second one?
Second.
All in favor of changing the November date from November 21st to the 20th, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Henry and Ms. Moon for clearing that up. Any other suggestions before we vote to approve the schedule as amended?
Mr. Chairman, one question for you. We've been struggling with the comprehensive plan here for some time and now that you're the new chairman, we've heard some comments several months ago from Michelle about getting active on this and then we have missed now two meetings due to problems with advertising and so are you gonna put us in mind and get us attention in this comprehensive plan to try to get this thing worked out in the first six months of 2018, what's long we'll do?
The short answer is yes, but the longer answer is that refer to item two in section G and I think we'll be, could be coming to that number momentarily. Anything else about the schedule that's up before us now? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule as modified?
Aye.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say in final, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe you all received the meeting minutes from our November 15 meeting. At the time, I would ask for any edits, revisions, and if we're done, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Emmett, we have heard the minutes, Dr. Henry.
I'll get a second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we get started, just to review a couple of the ground rules, you're free to comment on anything you like, but if you are here to speak on behalf of any of the particular items under new business, those applications or requested changes, we will have an individual hearing on each of those items at that time. So at this point, I would suggest that you hold any comments on those particular items. I would also request that you state your name and your district or where you live and limit your comments to three minutes. So with that, is there anyone who has a public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Phil Irwin of Flint Hill. I would appreciate if we could understand everything that you all said at a public hearing because very awkward, the temptation is to communicate amongst yourselves and not share your wisdom with us and the audience, so please, speak up. Couple of fast items. Number one, you are in jeopardy of losing the right to control the location, the design, the installation of community towers and by implication, other items that you should be considering. The General Assembly and two bills presently that are being approved will deny you that right. I suggest that we should have and still could, I believe, influence that legislation. Senator Omenchain is in favor of denying us the right to control our own development. Two items that will occur probably after my bedtime that I'd like to mention. Number one is the sign ordinance change. I would like to suggest that our three-by-four signs, not particularly illuminated, that served us very well in this county. We are a scenic county and billboards are not scenic to me anyway and to other organizations. Please do not allow any permanent structure, sign structures that would exceed the ordinance that we have at present time. Okay, let's see, what's the other one here? The active shooter application. At the visitor center in Provo, I had a question from a visitor. Where is the nearest shooting place? And we looked it up and there are shooting places all over this area except in Rapid County. We are a quiet county as well as a scenic county, where dark skies county and we ought to be a noise-free county and there's no such thing as a rifle range that's not noisy and I don't want that percussive sound to be influencing adversely this county. Please do not approve this right-of-way application.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I'm actually in Jackson District. I'd like to point out that when the supervisors meet now, they have applications. They have speakers, I mean, they have microphones, there's a sound system. I believe that your meeting is equally as important to the public and there's no reason that that same sound system should not be sitting on the table right now for your meeting so that the people in the audience can hear what's going on and the video can be recorded as it needs to be and I would like, in the future, I'd like to see you have that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montana. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Who's going to Jackson District? Comprehensive plan, you were owed a schedule back in November. There's a very, very general schedule that we provided tonight. February, all the data's supposed to be done, really? In February, almost over? Does anyone get to see that before it goes forward and is it just data or is there actually the studies required by the state statute? And for example, when is our comprehensive plan gonna have some idea of how we're gonna take care of our number one goal, which is agriculture? Because basically, I can tell from the ordinance, chapter 36, anything is allowed in agriculture, more than in any industrial zone. So I think there's a little bit more work than just updating a few census tables. There's a little bit of study that needs to be done associated with that. Wish that would be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blending. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Warwick, Wakefield District. Just a comment to you all, when I've been watching videos of some of the planning commission meetings in the past, it hasn't been as clear as I think it should have been. It's what you're voting on and what the motion you have voted on after was pretty consistent on. There's been some times I just couldn't, could not be able to tell from your talking is what you're voting on and what it means. That's it.
So you're specifically referring to the audio quality?
No, no, your discussion, it seems like very rare where a motion is put up to a vote that it's clearly stated.
I see.
What the motion is or there's not a little recap after the end of it said, we have voted for this, this, and this. It'll be helpful for people who aren't here or are just watching on the video.
Predict, yes, I see. Yes, thank you.
And if I'm just a little bit of a...
Yes, I think it would certainly help. But we could do a better job certainly articulating the motion. Any other public comments before we move on to the particular applications before us? Last call. Okay, well, thank you. With that, I will close the public comment period for tonight's meeting and we will move on to old business. The first item before us is one of the two recurrent ones, the proposed zoning ordinance It's been a while since we've spoken about this, but if I may, I'd like to recap where I understand that we are on this. At our October meeting, I believe we voted to move what we've been calling the sort of May amendments, which were the table of amendments that have been discussed. We've discussed them individually, we have voted on them, those votes are recorded on the tables that have been available on board docs and we also forwarded those to the board of supervisors at the same time we were addressing the so-called resolution ordinance changes, which were, we were specifically asked by the board supervisors to review. So that hearing did not proceed, but as far as I can tell, we've done what we need to do there with respect to the individual ordinances and what remains is for us to explicitly request that a markup version of the ordinance with those changes be prepared and be made available, publicized and be the subject of a public hearing specifically on the amendments. So that's my sort of understanding of where we are on this matter tonight. I will turn to fellow commissioners as to whether anyone has a different recollection or a different suggestion for how we proceed. Mr. Henry, starting with you.
Well, we need to proceed. We've been procrastinating on this for, I think, probably fair to say, two years where nothing's gotten done in two years. So we need to look forward and push on this and get some momentum behind this. We had one outside of the regular schedule of the planning commission meeting, I think might have been last spring and I thought someone was gonna get behind this, but it failed and now that we have some consistency in the zoning department, I think Mr. Chairman, the US Chairman, he could ride this thing hard and whether he can get this back to the public and get it approved, this shouldn't...
Thank you. Does he have any comments? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Bird? I feel throughout this process, we have had a stumbling block as to who was exactly going to do what in terms of actually drawing up the ordinance and therefore making it presentable not only to us but to the public and I guess I would like to have that articulated in such a fashion that we can follow it up and pursue it. And I can't answer that question.
Mr. Irwin, please. So it's not clear to me from looking over the last several months, minutes, whether the commission took, and I maybe did go back harder, took action to direct the strike-through version of the ordinance to be created so that it could be brought to the planning commission for a public hearing. So my understanding of the process would be that strike-through version be created, it'd be presented to the planning commission, review that to confirm that it is indeed what you want to have a public hearing on, you then authorize that public hearing, authorize your zoning administrator to advertise that public hearing, you seek input of all of the strike-through items that related to the table that you've talked about for so long, receive input from the public, potentially modify your recommendation to the board based on that input, pass it to the board so they can hold their public hearing. Thank you. That is my understanding as well. So unless there's further discussion, I believe what I would entertain is a motion to proceed to direct the zoning administrator in consultation with the county attorney to draft a strike-through version of the zoning ordinance showing the proposed changes as per the table that we've already voted on.
And then bring it to us before scheduling for public hearing.
And bring it to us, the markup version before scheduling for public hearing.
I see.
Second? Any further discussion?
In your motion, you included in there a consultation...
In your motion, you included in there a consultation with the county attorney. I don't know whether we've ever done that before in the role of the county attorney in the comprehensive plan. And I'm also wondering if the county administrator, historically, has been, by his multiple hats that he wore, he kind of was in there too. I guess, Gary, you're kind of in that.
Historically, you did it, county administrator, was your zoning administrator. I will definitely be involved with this summer preparing this. It is appropriate for the county attorney to make sure that the eventual code is in proper form so that when you do advertise it and you go through the process that is legal and forceful.
It's yours all, but it should probably come.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to proceed with markup of the zoning ordinance? Say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
So follow up on that. Are we anticipating a markup version in March now?
It's an extensive markup. I'm not going to guarantee that.
But definitely able.
I would guarantee anything.
Definitely. But I think that would be very good. And if they can get it in March, they'd be better.
Next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan. If you indulge me again, I'd like to tee this up. I think everyone shares, regardless of where you might attribute cause or blame or reasoning, I think we're all unsatisfied with the pace of the approval of the comprehensive plan. I think there are some various perceptions and perhaps different views on what that comprehensive plan review process looks like and what, what requires to be, is required to be done. And I think that's a healthy discussion. We should continue to add it. However, I would also say that over the course of the last two or three years that we've been working on this revision, we have had at least two full rounds of, of public hearings in the various districts. And we ourselves have gone through the plan multiple times, including several work sessions related to the meat of the plan, which is the policies in Chapter 6. I believe what has been the holdup primarily has been the update of the first... Four chapters? Is it four or five? Whatever. The first, the demographic chapters that include the data tables and the like. That was a task that was, as I recall, first given to our assistant county administrator a couple of years ago. And still, I understand that some progress has been made in compiling that information, but I don't think those, those tables have been prepared. So from my perspective, what is before us and what I would ask you, fellow commissioners, to reflect on and opine upon is that we, as we did with the zoning ordinance, consider an explicit request to the zoning administrator to complete the, the data work required in those first few chapters and again, deliver a complete comprehensive draft that has all of the chapters as we have discussed and debated them to this point in time so that we can once again see that plan and, and upon our approval, put it out for a public hearing. So that is my sense of where we are on this. And Mr. Bird, I'd love to hear your perspective on the matter.
I agree with you completely, and I feel that there does need to be a concrete deadline for this to happen because in its absence, it doesn't seem to have happened. And I would say that if that isn't done by our next planning commission meeting, we ought to create a, or hire, or enable somebody who will do it because I, I think the time for delay and waiting has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Mr. Brown, if you had any comments on that?
I agree with him. I make a statement. And the data needs to be gotten together and planned and put out.
Mr. Henry?
No. Mr. Lightfoot, I say, this summer's reached out to the PDC to gauge their ability to provide assistance in preparing the, in updating the data tables. She was met with a positive response. I actually had a meeting scheduled with Mr. Moniz today. We talked about that. They've recently performed a similar task for Madison County. He'll be providing a copy of the cohort of services that they provide in Madison. We'll be reviewing that shortly. It's my interest to get this task behind us so that you can consider the full plan and review it in its entirety and then provide a public input.
So there's been some, it's been suggested, and I think it's pretty easy to agree, that having some kind of deadline will, will force the matter, although I think it's, is it reasonable to have, to have that, those tables and that draft for the next meeting? Or is it, or should we? What's your sense?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how responsive PDC can be. Understand that if it's available for the next meeting, you have to back that up. Then when do we have to be prepared for the packet? So you're talking about three weeks. Michelle has done some work already, so just can't commit not.
Well, this sounds very good, that motion is underway.
And just for clarification, is it the PEC or the Raffinick?
TDC.
Okay. I think district is what I thought.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes. So I guess I am grafted a bit with what, if any further action we can take tonight. It sounds like we're in pretty vehement agreement about what needs to be done. So I'm going to question what's a reasonable timeframe. I guess my request would be, and maybe we can put this in the form of a motion, that we, we direct the zoning administrator to proceed with haste and, and report to us at the next meeting a status and, and, and explicit plan for getting those tables. Meanwhile, I don't know that there's, and I guess I'd like to hear from the commissioners if, if my sentiment about the other chapter is right. I mean, from my perspective, even if, you know, every time some more time passes, there's a temptation to go back and look at it again, which we've done several times now. This thing is so woefully late and it's a living document that is reviewed on a regular basis, so it isn't supposed to exceed five years for review. There's nothing that prevents us from modifying it or reviewing pieces of it as we see fit in a shorter amount of time. So my personal preference would be to get this monkey off our back and head with, with dispatch to complete the plan as it's been envisioned by this commission up to this time. Is that, is that the sense? Does anyone have a reaction or want to take an opposing view to that?
You have a timeline that's been worked out, I guess, between the planning commission and the zoning administrator. I don't know if you've seen that before.
I don't believe we have.
Certainly. And this will need to be updated as we miss January and February. My only thought about not revisiting Chapter 6, there just may be some ticket items where legislation has changed or where some direction may need to be added in the form of telecommunication, solar farms. So we might need to add just a few things.
Thank you for bringing that up. My sense is that this thing will be, when it's compiled, there will be another few bites at the apple when it's informed. But I, I'd rather, you know, push ahead than try to keep dealing with it piecemeal. And, you know, it seems to me that this, the data are the, the last big block of things that needs to be done before we can sort of push the thing out. And I, and I recognize fully that there may be a greater deal of scrutiny on this once it's been fully advertised and, you know, people see it in written form and we may get feedback from the public that we didn't get when we went around to our sessions. And I think that's the process that it should play out. So perhaps the thing to do, thank you for reminding me of this, this timeline. I don't believe we had discussed it, but it does reflect the challenges with the deadlines here. So maybe the thing to do is to revise, revise this. So we, basically, it looks like... Is it reasonable that this just push the one month that we've lost and we bring this? I mean, otherwise, it seems to be attacked, if perhaps optimistic, because any, any missed month will mean another missed month. But I guess I would suggest that we pick up with this schedule, starting with, you know, move everything back one month, starting with the data tables in, in February. It goes March, bring the draft before the planning commission for review, set a public hearing date in April. In May, have the public hearing before the PC. June, have the public hearing before the board of supervisors. And July, publish new updated comprehensive plan, recognizing that events could overtake that schedule. Is that, is that, to me, that's about as crisp as we can make it at this point. I don't know, Mr. Henry?
I apologize. I'm at a bit of a loss with the commission formally discuss forming an advisory committee to work on the plan. That's something still a decision that's listed for January. If it is, that's something we should take care of tonight. If you think that staff should pursue independent of some committee.
Thank you for bringing that up. No, this commission, I don't believe, did discuss having an advisory committee to work on the plan. I think that, that reflects a, a step back that, that is contrary to the discussion we've had to this point. So my recommendation and, and I guess the motion that I'm sort of looking for would be that we start with the, the step that's listed as February, move each thing back a month and get this thing moving. So if I could restate that, for the purpose of the folks here, I would entertain a, a motion to strike the first line in this timeline and move that each of the subsequent dates back by one month and request that the zoning administrator proceed along those lines. If I could get that motion, I'd be grateful.
I would show move.
A second.
Any further discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to new business. Once again, we will now have a public hearing for each of the applications before us this evening. I will, just to go with the format, I'll first ask our standard zoning administrator, whether in the opening remarks, we will also acknowledge the applicant if they would like to clarify. And then we will, it's usually open up a public hearing after that.
Yeah, so just to be clear, in no way, shape, or form, the zoning administrator, just helping guide the meeting. So it would be appropriate for staff report first. I'm at a bit of a loss. I've talked to Michelle very quickly today. First item I believe we have on this is Anderson family apartment. She notes that they've applied for a 1,200 square foot, three bedroom, two bath home. They're located 200 feet from the primary dwelling and the property is located at 462 Utown Road in Amosville, tax map number 4334H. Property is 10.2863 acres in size and it's owned agriculture. She notes that the health department has no objections to the request and a permit will be retained from then at the time of construction. No comments from BDOT will provide it. The application's been properly advertised and the unit property's been notified by certified mail attorney to Michelle. With, with that, I don't have anything further that would be appropriate for you to hear from the applicant for their perspective and then a public hearing.
Thank you. Well done.
Consider you were called to service without warning.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
I don't have anything to add unless you have some questions.
Okay. Thank you. We might already reserve that, right? So with that, I would like to open up the public hearing for special use permit 1711-10, the Anderson family apartment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this application? Any comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the hearing on the Anderson family apartment. Mr. Brown, I believe this property is in your district, so I will continue the practice of allowing you to either choose to go first or last as you see fit.
I have a question, too. Being a three-bedroom apartment, where is the septic system going to be?
The septic system should be located behind the house. And we have had, the PERC tests have been performed on the proposed septic location and they identified several different possible locations and we do have the permit.
Okay, what about the well?
The well would be located in front of the property with all the proper clearances to, from the septic and existing structure.
And where would it be located in comparison to the children's playhouse you have there?
Children's playhouse would be relocated.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Bird?
I have other questions.
Mr. Henry?
Mr. Anderson, is this for your parents or your wife's parents or? My wife's parents.
Anything else, Mr. Henry? It is me?
I have no questions.
And I have no questions. So, Mr. Brown, would you like to make a motion on this application?
Make a motion, we recommend approval.
Mr. Decker?
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any amount of support? Thank you very much. Your next step is to the BDA? Did they go to the BDA?
It should be.
So the next application before us tonight is special use permit 17-11-11, the Muse Forest Home. Commissioner, would you like to tee us up on this?
Yes, 1711-11. She noted this is Mr. and Mrs. Muse, according S U P for Forest Home. They'll be renting out a three-bedroom, one-bath home. Property's located at 272 Piedmont Street in the town of Washington, I think just outside of the town of Washington. Tax map 20A130. And the property is 18,000 square feet in size. Property is owned R2. No comments from BDOT or the health department will provide it. This numbers indicates the application was properly advertised and the joint property owners, along with the town of Washington, have been notified by certified mail.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I notice the applicant is here somewhere. Yes, it's Muse. Do you have anything to add to your application, Seaton?
Yes.
Thank you. You may have, stay tuned, they may have some questions. Mr. Henry, I believe, by mistake, this application is in your district.
Does this have town one of stores or what? Does this have town, one of its shores, or what, seven?
It's town.
Town, both islands? All questions, aye.
It's me.
I just have concerns about the size of the home. The ordinance, the standards allow up to 12 people, and I don't know if it would be worth conditioning it to, you know, maybe two people per bedroom. I just don't know that the, if it's a three-bedroom, one-bath home, if it could handle 12 people. It may be worth considering that condition. And I was also, you know, one of the standards is that the parking should be outside of any required front yard and be screened. I think that would be perhaps pertinent to have as a condition. And then just with the Airbnbs, when they're not owner occupied, I think just some basic building safety notice somewhere prevalent in the home, working smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguisher, and then an emergency contact list. I'd just throw that out there for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Mr. Brown, no comment. Mr. Bird?
Inasmuch as we are trying to promote tourism in this county, it seems to me that tourist homes like this are a good and necessary development and are, will provide not only help for other businesses and uses of the county, but also provide a source of income for the owners and operators. I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Anything else? So, Mr. Henry, back to you.
I was reading this a little bit, we did have a public hearing.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry, first day on the job. So now that you've showed you all our cards, you can respond. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing on this special use permit application. If you'd like to speak again, please identify your name and where you live and move yourself to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak on this application?
Jennifer Alexander, Flint Hill High. Supportless means recommendations for safety. We have volunteer everything. If we need help, the less we need them, the better. So, fire extinguishers, fire detectors, smoke detectors, same to me, pretty easy things to put in.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments?
Can I ask some questions? I appreciate the suggestions on the safety and will provide by all of them. Could you explain the screening of the driveways? I don't understand what that means.
I think when we, as we move to action and make a motion, we'll be as explicit as we can be about what those conditions would be. It may still not be clear enough for you, but why don't we, why don't you give us at least one shot at it?
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from the public before we close the hearing on this application? If not, then I hereby close the public hearing on special use 17-11-11 and return to my commissioners. Mr. Henry, I believe everyone has had a chance to opine on this. Would you like to?
Well, Mrs. Muse, you heard the comments about the occupancy. Number of bedrooms here is two.
There's this three-bedroom, one-bath, that's the way it's, the family who bought it probably was living it for 20 years. But the third bedroom has an exit door, so we're only going to use two bedrooms. So we would probably maximum, I would say with the sofa bed, probably six people, if that's okay. So it'd be two bedrooms, a den, and a sofa bed.
In, in terms of talking about the, any necessary screen here, of course, we have the photograph here of your house. I guess if you're having six people, I guess you could have potentially three cars. I think you would have probably six cars, you know? Will this, you'd be able to have on-site parking? Are you going to have to park in the street if you have, with, what's the site, what's the parking ability there?
Oh, no, I haven't, well, I thought that through. That's a good, good thing to figure out.
What do you think is a good neighborhood standard? Two cars?
I would say two cars, I think. I mean, you're, it's, it's, you could park on the side, but you'd really be taking kind of part of the street control.
And Holly, in terms of the screening, the screening is addressed on three sides or just on the?
It would be that the vehicles would have to be screened, and that's an ordinance standard that we can't waive. So just, you can see it from the road. So shrubs, or it could be that you have existing things you could use to strategize and, but the idea is so that they're not in the street, they're on the property and screened.
So it's a screening of the cars?
Yes, of the driveway.
But can you see the back of the cars? Because you feel like pulling into the driveway.
Sure, sure. And they would deal with it at site point.
There may not be a site.
It's a site point required in the ordinance.
With no development?
It had an access, it's a site point required.
So I would, I would make a motion that we approve this, pass it on to the BDA. We'll just stand in there, it would be a maximum of six people, two cars, and the safety features in terms of the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide and handbooks of emergency things, and whatever site plan requirements is for the ordinance. That's my motion.
I second.
I believe one of those arguments, just to be clear, was an emergency contact.
That goes into the vote.
Okay.
Just want to make sure Marlene is.
I, I have the draft and I can share.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, I would ask all in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we hereby will recommend approval of the application, subject to the conditions articulated in the motion. Feel free to hang out or.
No, I don't think you.
Stop, is the BCA. Next application before us this evening is special use permit 17-12-12, the Albee property, bed breakfast. I promised all of the common period this time that Mr. Curry, if he would be so kind to tee this one up for us.
This, Mr. Summers states that Mr. Albee's applied for a special use permit for a tourist home slash Airbnb. He's renting out his, he'll be renting out his home occasionally as an Airbnb. Property is located at 295 Pickle Ridge Lane, Spiritville, tax map 27-1. The property is 141.8349 acres in size. It's some, see, conservation. Application has been properly advertised, and adjoining property owners have been notified by cert, certified mail. Do want to add that the question brought to my attention as to the ownership of the property and whether it's held in joint ownership and if all parties of ownership are aware of the application and approve of that.
So that's just an open question, it's an issue that's been raised.
I don't know the answer. And I, and I don't fully understand the ownership situation, not knowing, who may be a lot of the.
Okay, well, that may be a good segue to acknowledge the applicant if they are here. Yes, Mr. Brown?
I am sole owner of the property, and the house is my guest house, which I use for family and friends, and it is fully equipped with smoke detectors, fire things, and actually a book with a list of contacts, emergency contacts. I rarely have anybody there unless I'm there on the weekend, and I'd like to use it as an Airbnb, and occasionally, when I feel like it. And I don't know what your question is in the ownership. That's pretty clear, I think, in the title registers.
Mrs. Ringer passed away, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's all.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Albee, thank you for that. We make up further questions for you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on special use permit 17-12-12. Would anyone like to speak on this application? Any public comments? Okay, if not, I will hereby close the special use, or the, the public hearing on that special use permit and turn to my commissioners. I believe this would be in P month.
Mr., you don't mind, I'll start this, will make things easier.
Please.
I've had the opportunity in the past to see this property, and it's, it's a perfect Airbnb. You've got to go through the park, couple miles to get to it, you've got a big piece of land, total privacy, total buffer. If there was ever a place where a Airbnb could be, without question, it's this place. It might be one of the best BND sites in Rapid County. If I wanted to stay at a BND, this would be the place I'd go to. In the middle of the park, you know, in the middle of the park, peace and quiet, no neighbors.
This is a conflict.
Absolutely not. It's, it's absolutely, this is a open and shut here. No questions of the applicant.
Well, since we started in this direction, I don't feel like going back and forth. Ms. Lee will come to you next.
I just had the same concerns I did with the other Airbnbs, but it sounds like he only rents it when he's there. He already has the safety features in place, so I don't have any questions.
I guess just to add to that, though, I don't think we would currently.
I don't think so either.
To make those requirements, it breaks, knows that they're already there, they won't apply any additional burden, but I think it's incumbent on us, if we feel that those are necessary, that we should, we should say so. Mr. Brown, have you got anything to say on this? Mr. Bird? And nor do I have any further comments, although I do think we should try to articulate some boundaries. I didn't, there's, is there a, how many bedrooms are we talking, do we, do we want to? I guess, Mr. Henry, I'll perhaps defer to you if you're prepared to make a motion, but it does strike me that we might want to make the same provisions, or at least make the, make the items already articulated in the application binded by the, as commissioners. That's the guest room. Mr. Henry, are you?
Mr. Albee, how many bedrooms do you have here?
There are actually three that are technically bedrooms, but one of them is a library den that does come in and out. So I use two bedrooms, there's a same bath, and the septic system I do about every eight to 10 year. This house doesn't get much use.
So what number of occupants do you feel is correct?
None more than six.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this application with the occupancy of six people excluding the owner, excluding the safety listed, the smoke detector, carbon monoxide, emergency contact person there.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? If not, I'd ask anybody who supports the recommendation of approval to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. You're off to the BDA. Moving on to special use permit number 18-01-02, the Hawkins Forest Home.
Okay, 180102, Ms. Hawkins has applied for a special use permit for a tourist home. She will be renting out the home as a tourist home. The property is located at 892 Main Street, Washington, tax map 20-13C. Property is 2.658 acres in size, it's owned R2.
The application's been properly advertised, and joint property owners have been notified by certified mail.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Hello? Does she have anything to the application? It speaks for itself. Let's know if we have any questions. Thank you. That will open the public hearing on special use permit 18-01-02. Is there anyone who would like to speak about this application?
I'm here, Foster. I have a question, which is not necessarily focused on one application, but all the applications. Is there a standard that you all are developing for all of these bed breakfasts that would include things like the smoke detectors or screening? Other, other items.
Sure. Thank you. We'll, we'll address that. Let's see if there's any other comments on this particular application. And for the record, Mr. Foster, what district are you in? What district?
Wakefield.
Any further comments? If not, I will close the public comment, or the public hearing on the Hawkins Tourist Home. Mr. Foster, to address your question, maybe someone could provide the zoning ordinance records. There are a list of explicit standards, and then it is incumbent on the commission to apply any particular conditions that we feel are necessary to ensure the general health and welfare of the community where the, where the, where the site is. So that's why you hear when we, we often will approve these things conditionally. It does appear that there is a, a set of requirements that we are typically making, and I think as we proceed with this process of addressing zoning ordinance, we may very well want to codify some of these. But right now, we have the specific standards in 170, wherever they are, and the general standards that allow us to set conditions that we feel are necessary to ensure those general standards. Is that sufficient for now?
Thank you.
So I believe we're near the end, Mr. Henry.
This is property, are you hooked on the town waters or there, or you got it all separate?
Water and separate.
Well, what?
Town water.
Town water, okay. So the, appears that the owner here is Kimberly Hawkins and Grandma's House LLC. And the signature at the bottom, I guess, is yours?
It is. I'm the sole owner.
You, you are also Grandma's House. You're the managing partner.
Correct. That's my grandpa's house, yeah, for about 60 years.
But you, you're the manager of?
I am, yeah. I'm the sole owner.
Okay, all in the same. And how many bedrooms do you have?
Two bedrooms.
What's that?
One bath.
Basement?
Oh, there's basement.
Unfinished?
Partially finished.
Nobody sleeping down there?
No.
Okay, oh, I don't have any questions.
You know, I can tell you, I don't know if anybody else has experiences with the Airbnbs, but to go through the insurance process is already pretty, pretty stringent in order to get commercial insurance to have an Airbnb. In order to get commercial insurance to have an Airbnb, they're very strict in what they require. So you have to have a smoke detector, a carbon monoxide detector in every bedroom, almost every room in the house. Plus, you have to have the fire extinguishers. You know, they take expensive pictures of everything. It's expensive. It's actually, it's about double the amount of what a typical homeowner's policy would be. And like I said, their underwriting is pretty strict.
So is this, there's this one building, one building on this property, right?
Uh, there's a, you know, there's a garage, there's
Sorry, I should be clear. One, one living building.
Correct.
And is this your, is this your full-time home as well? Okay, so there would not, this would, another, be another case where there would not be a resident manager. Those are the only questions I have, Mr. Brown. Did I hit the right one?
No, you hit the already one.
Oh, I did? Anything over there?
And then just for clarification purposes, the only reason I didn't say screening, just so that we're being fair, is that this one has the screening in place. So I probably didn't mention.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Henry, would you like to make a motion on this application?
We've been doing, we've been doing two people a bedroom.
Yes.
Six people.
And I probably wouldn't put more than four in there. Again, it's family home, and it's pretty special to me. So my, well, I'm married, and I, you know, I have
Which means you got three bedrooms.
Yeah.
We'll use it as six. You don't have to do six.
Yeah, there would not be more than six, but I have underwritten it for four.
Okay. The motion that we approve this, six residents, occupants, excluding the owner, with the, who works with safety items and fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, et cetera, and those who contact person.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. You're off to the supervisor.
No.
No, that one goes also to the supervisor. Oh, I see, yes, I'm on. You're free to leave, or hang around.
Thank you.
This brings us to special exception number eighteen dash oh one dash oh three. I'm sorry, I checked twice. Sorry, this work is my birthday. Moving on to special use permit eighteen oh one dash oh one, Ellis family apartment.
Yes, eighteen oh one oh one. Ms. Foster, Ms. Ellis have applied for a SVP for a family apartment. Family apartment is for their children, grandchildren, and in-laws. They'll be constructing a twelve foot square foot, one bedroom, two bath home. Family apartment will be located anywhere from seventy-six feet from the primary dwelling. Apartment is located at five one six Deering Road, Berkeley, tax map thirteen one B. Apartment is nine point one seven two acres in size and it's done agricultural. Just somewhere as a case application was properly advertised, and any joint property owners have been notified by certified names.
Thank you very much. I believe the applicants are here. Would you like to add anything to the application?
We'll answer your questions.
Hey, thank you. We'll be sure to ask them if we have any. With that, I would like to open up the public hearing on the Ellis family apartment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this application? All right, hearing none. I will hereby close the public hearing on special use permit eighteen dash oh one dash oh one, and turn to our commissioners, Miss Lee.
Yes, yes. Mr. Foster, I'm just curious, have you talked to the health department about a well in Wakefield yet at this point?
We are planning on using the existing well on the property.
Okay.
Which is being utilized by the existing house right now. But it will be shared between the two houses.
And the health department has no objection to that?
We've had an independent inspector who hasn't given us a report yet as far as the septic system is concerned. We would have a separate septic field for that house.
And is it going to go where the flag is to the right of the driveway? There's a little orange flag there?
Pretty close.
Okay.
That's where the house is.
Yeah, that's it. I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Henry, do you have a question?
Mr. Burr.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Third one we had. First one we've had where a family apartment is trying to get one for the kids. Usually the kids get them for the parents. They'll switch places later.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I have no questions.
Nor do I have any questions. Miss Lee, would you like to?
Yes, sir. I immediately recommend approval subject to the appropriate health department permits that are required for the well and septic.
Okay, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any dance? Thank you. You're on to the ECA. Now that brings us to special exception eighteen dash oh one dash oh three, the active shooter and training center.
There's a memo for this one. I understand that this is an application for a special exception under the event and training portion of the ordinance. There's some question as to what uses will actually be conducted on site, and whether they all fit into that category. It's something the commission should be considering to your applicant and public. There's also a question in my mind whether the applicant is indeed a bona fide contract purchaser of the property, it's required by one seventy fifty seven D. That may be the case. If so, it was, don't know that it's been provided as part of the application, which is a requirement here.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant represented here, Mr. Curry? Hello, are you Mr. Dubois?
No, I'm Mike Dries. I'm the purchaser of the property. So we've put earnest money back, continued to draw certain approval to procure the property.
So that, has that document been provided to the county, to the?
Oh, no, it wasn't presented. We can provide that tomorrow, perhaps.
As a requirement of
So the application is not complete?
That's my understanding.
No problem. We were informed that we need to provide the contract documents.
Just for the planning commission's benefit. One seventy fifty seven is submission requirements. A letter D is a copy of the applicant's purchase agreement or sales contract that the applicant is a contractor.
That has been a requirement that we adhere to. I guess the question is, do we leave it there? Or do we allow some discussion of this applicant? It's unfortunate that it isn't complete, but I think we have been on this, we have been working hard to make sure that we don't find ourselves in this situation. It's unfortunate that we are here. Comments from other commissioners about how they would like to proceed? Mr. Henry, do you have?
Is the owner here?
No, she's not. She's in Texas. We have, we have provided a letter of intent that was signed by the owner as well.
Was her letter, did she put her letter in to file the order? Did she submit a letter?
She submitted a letter to say that we were allowed to present her property because it was an intent of mine.
Yeah, that's, that's Mr. Dubois's letter, isn't it?
I think that probably meets, if he has no permission, and I think that letter is probably sufficient.
Yeah, I have a feeling that perhaps some of the people in the audience have come here tonight to speak on this one as well. So I'm reluctant to kick the can, even though I think it is reasonable to do so. Other thoughts from other commissioners?
I would infer with Mr. Henry that it would seem that that letter is tantamount to a contract.
Okay. But I heard that a contract does exist, it's just not in your county's possession.
Right, so we would certainly wish for that to be, the file to be completed.
Absolutely.
Offered down tonight, we'll send a contract in tomorrow.
Yes, we will be tomorrow morning, please.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else to add to the application?
If I may have maybe two minutes, just to quickly explain the concept of two yard and what the intention is. I suspect there will be some questions from the public hearing, and might be previous cases. RSM is a small women owned business. It's owned by my wife and myself. My wife is a fifty percent share owner. I own the remaining amount. We have sixteen employees. We don't do active shooter training per se. We do safety and security awareness training for humanitarian organizations going to high-risk environments. So we train people like CARE, Save the Children, OCSAM, all of those organizations. Sorry.
OCSAM, SWOL.
Sorry, SWOL, sorry, my mistake. I've lived it longer than I have in the A. However, I still speak too quickly. My apologies. We have seventeen employees. We're a very small company, and we've been doing this training in a place in Forest Village in Marshall for the last three years with no problems. And we've not had any issues with the locals, the local inhabitants. We normally run two-day training courses. The first day is in the classroom, and the second day we take them out into the woods and we walk them around scenarios. The active shooter part is probably less than one percent of the training. The remaining is doing things like casualty stabilization, dealing with illegal checkpoints in foreign countries, looking for inert munitions, no real bombs, just plastic ones, pretend ones, because they may come across mines or booby traps around the world where they travel. We do self-defense of females. We do a lot of gender security awareness training. And then there is very, very sporadic blank firing munitions used. Blank firing has nothing coming up yet, it's just a noise. The noise of the blank firing round is probably half or a third of the normal bullets. And we normally only fire one or two, and then we stop. So there's not really protracted gun fire. There is zero danger at all. There is no knife firing at all, no real bullets. We normally only do one or two courses a month, so we have very low impact upon the community. We're very keen on the environment, so we're looking at doing things to enhance the environment conservation of the area, including moving the cows away from the river as well. And our social responsibility program involves helping children's schools and churches. We actually designed free of charge for the state of Virginia, North Carolina, and DC, active shooter awareness training for teachers. And we did that for free, although we're a small company. We also provided their policies, and we wrote and provided their training for bus drivers as well. And we would envisage doing that with the local community as well. The traffic will be limited to one, two vehicles. They will come in, they will stay for the day, and they will leave at the end of the day. So we're not the clog up the roads. So we don't think that we're going to make much of an impact upon you guys at all. We will hire all of the local businesses to provide food and water, and we'll bring that in, feed the participants, normally twenty to forty maximum, and then they will be disappearing at the end of the day. So hopefully this will not be a conflict with anything within the community, and we will not change the nature of the land, we'll keep it as scenic as it is now. Do you have to answer any questions?
Thank you, sir. With that, I will hereby open the public comment, the public hearing on special exception eighteen oh one dash oh three, the active shooter and training center. Would anyone like to speak on this application? Yes, or Mr. Matt?
Ryan Mclellan from Dr. Duster. Been looking at all of the information that was on Door Docs, and reading about the, the page, which is on RSM Stationery, about the team. It says, Risk and Strategic Management Corporation is a small woman in veteran-owned business which principally is just a number of charities and whatever. And I think the service that they provide in the world we live in today is a necessary service. But if this would have said, Mike Blyth and McDonald's Corporation, or Walmart, or 7-Eleven, we would have had to move this to the high school. But it's RSM. And who is RSM? And when you go online and you look up RSM, and this is from Wikipedia, RSM International, branded RSM, is a multinational network of accounting firms forming the sixth largest accounting professional services network in the world. These guys are big.
May I?
So it will give you an opportunity.
You know, they're, they are big. They're, they're a large corporation, and part of, part of their accounting is also consulting and crisis management. And I believe Mr. Blyth, Blyth is the CEO of their crisis management section. But my concern is that we tend to get nervous about large corporations wanting to come into Rapid County, and not knowing what their intent is. And also, because they are a large corporation, they have a large legal department. And when they want to get things done, or whatever, they can normally get things done. And, and we may be opening up Pandora's Box here by, you know, letting them in the door. And like I said, the service they provide is a necessary service, but I just would be really nervous about having them getting a foothold in Rapid County.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. We'll come back and give you an opportunity to address your question, rather than do this. And we will ask, too, that people address their comments to the commission, and not to the applicant, or to one another. Would anyone else like to speak on this application? Yes?
Yeah, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District. And I have three comments. One is, I'm loathe always to change a, by using special use or special exemption permit, agricultural use to commercial. And I have a lot more sympathy for somebody who's trying to make their farm work, and trying to figure out a way of sustaining their own livelihood where they live. To permit somebody to come in who doesn't already own the land for the purposes of commercial use, I think is, is a mistake. And I also think that this is actually on behalf of a friend of mine who owns a house directly next to the, to the Dubois's, that having a, an active shooter training center in your backyard is a, it's a good affect the value of your property, the neighboring property. I just don't see how it will enhance that property at all. And I know that she would like to retire there, and she'd rather not hear whatever amount of shooting there is in her retirement. And then the third thing is, some of us went to a lot of trouble to get the Jordan River designated as a scenic property. And again, having an active shooter, shooting training center, however benign, I think is not in accordance with, you know, what we envisioned when we thought of having our scenic river and going through a U-Polit land. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else care to speak? Yes?
I'm Patty Carty, Captain District. I was trying to think back. I know that there have been discussions about whether a permit goes to the owner, or if it goes with the property. goes to the owner, or if it goes with the property. They don't own the property yet. And so that, to me, is a, is a big question about how you're going to deal with that. Another, another thing, I, I think this application is oddly generic, and, I mean, it's, it's well-written. I'm a writer. I can tell when things are well-written. But the only part in there is like two paragraphs that really apply to Rappahannock County. They, they try to cite, I guess, a zoning section, but it doesn't make sense. The Coles Road is misspelled. And I don't know, maybe it's a case of, as someone advised me recently, if you're going to misspell something, just do, do it consistently and misspell it the same way at a time. There's, it says, "Application for special exception," but then in a couple of places it talks about a zoning approval or zoning variance. That's confusing to me. I wonder if this company, I mean, they seem very good at what they do, and I agree with Ron, you know, in today's world, this is probably very necessary. But I wonder how much they know about Rappahannock County. They're just up the road in Manassas, and, but just the things that are in here make me wonder how much they know about the county, and how much they, they really care about the community and the environment. So that's all I wanted to say.
Ms. Carney. Anyone else care to speak on this application? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sally Winter. I live right across the street from Old Kinnels. If you look at this map, to walk from my patio to that fence line is twenty-five feet. I've done a little bit of research. I'm a Realtor. I've been in real estate since nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, in the state of Virginia. I sell new homes for builders and developers. I've talked to the vice president of our land division. I've gone to Northern Virginia Appraisals. I've talked to another appraiser in Faukeira County in Lake Frederick where I'm selling. And every person I've talked to said that this is going to depreciate all of our land values because this is a derelict property at this point. I've looked up all the shooting ranges. You've probably got about fifteen of them right in this area. Why do you want to go into a rural agricultural site? I've got four beautiful grandchildren, and I'm not going to feel comfortable having one on my farm, because who knows what's going to happen there? Who's going to control it? Who's going to police it? Do we have enough personnel in the county? Enough people in the sheriff's department to come out when we have an issue? How many toilets do we have to have out there? Are you going to have a bank of John's Johns? And who's going to get rid of the lead issue if they're not shooting blanks? And what about blanks? What about bombs? Thank you.
Would you like to be, would anyone still stand back?
I'm Betsy Parker. I share a unique, a half-mile boundary with Old Kinnels. Excuse me, a half-mile right-of-way through Old Kinnels. I share a mile property line with this farm. I know that half the people in this room are here because of this application. I don't think they read it carefully. What they see is active shooter, as though they're actively shooting. They're not actively shooting. They're teaching you how to deal with it if you're being actively shot at. They're not shooting. They're not shooting. Let me refer to my notes so I can get through this. I am the only person alive that understands this spider web. It is a really ugly property mine. Nobody knows where it is. The Realtor doesn't know where it is, where it is. He walks all over my property showing people this derelict, she's absolutely right, it's derelict property. There is no way that Old Kinnels can be retrieved without somebody looking after. And I have looked very, very carefully at this application, because it affects me more than anyone in this old, in this old county. I've studied the property. I've studied the application up and down sideways. It is not a large corporation. It's a tiny little group. There's another corporation that has the same name, and bless their hearts for trying to look after us out in the country, but it's not the same company. This is a little company. It's not a big corporation. In my opinion, having interviewed the purchasers, having interviewed his wife, having exhaustively studied this application, I cannot see any reason that this applicant won't improve the neighborhood. Right now, all of you know, currently the livestock are using the riparian prep fencing to keep them in the river, not out of it, as it was designed to do. The purchaser has agreed to allow me to reorganize the agriculture use on my livestock. I know that they don't belong fenced in the river. They belong fenced out of the river. I'm going to take care of that. I'm going to try and return the coral Jordan River back to being a clean river, not have cattle in it, have them out of it. Here's my belief that this is a good use of the land, and it is a perfect use, let me see if I can get this right, of the great unwritten county code. Welcome to Rappahannock County. Thank you for visiting. Now leave.
Ma'am, before you sit down, could I just ask you to clarify, do you access your property through this?
After my, I logged it back for the Old Kinnels twenty-five years ago.
Come back. I have some trouble interpreting this. Meanwhile, yes, sir, back.
My name is Ron Burleson. I live in Flunhill. I did a work for the federal government. I'm also commander in one of the special operations units in Mark County Sheriff's Office. I'm not going to get into details. I don't agree with Mr. Blythe regarding blanks and how quiet they are. I have a little bit of experience firing blanks myself. Here's my issue. I didn't receive any kind of notice. I'm a couple hundred feet, my property line's a couple hundred feet from this property line, my kitchen, my living room, look over this property as does the rest of my house. I attended a meeting. I heard what Mr. Blythe had to say. I've heard a lot of what Mr. Blythe has had to say. I looked at Mr. Blythe's website, and I noticed on there that he lists that he has government agencies as his clients identified on his website. I also noticed that he says he's a teammate with multiple awards in the defense industry. I don't know for sure what to believe. I know Mr. Blythe has made a lot of promises. I don't know what his real intent is with purchasing the property, but this is what I do know. If this board allows him to have a firing range on that property, a firing range facility under one seventy dash thirty-six, I do know what his rights will be. His rights will be to fire live ammunition on that property whenever he wants to. I spent, I invested two million dollars in my property across the street. I did not do that to have a firing range a couple hundred feet of it, okay? I agree. This is going to have a significant impact to our property values. It's going to be incessant noise if he exercises what his rights will be. And I heard Mr. Byrd speak of tourism, and your interest in tourism in this county. I cannot imagine that a shooting range on Crest Hill Road with all the Airbnbs that are located near there, that this is going to be in the interest of tourism. I'm vehemently opposed to this, as are many of the neighbors that are here that are, that are close to this property. I appreciate what his group is trying to do, but the promises are not limitation. If you're going to pass this, then my request is that you write significant restrictions into this. Thank you.
Would you like to go next? Yes, sir.
Chris Williams from the Wakefield District. I just wrapped up a twenty-five-year law enforcement career in Prince William County. I am no stranger to training. I met Mr. Blythe on a couple of occasions, and I truly believe in what you're doing, but not in my neighborhood. I feel like I have enough noise in, on Crest Hill Road with the occasional gunfire from the, from the target practicing and hunting. I come home quite often to a dog who's off his food as a result of that. I'm quite familiar with blanks. There is gunpowder, and there's an explosion, and there's noise. I think we have enough noise on Crest Hill, but I do support what you're doing, sir. I like you, and I need you to do it, sir.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to go next?
I'm Anne Harmon from Wakefield. My property is on North Coles Road, just opposite Old Kinnels. So I'm literally across the road. Now, the one thing that puzzles me is in his presentation, he kept mentioning just a small company, and yet we find out that that is a part of a giant company. I heard nothing about that at a preliminary meeting that was held, so I feel a bit scared. Is it?
When will we begin answering that question before we proceed?
Okay. Yeah. I also feel that a change in any sort of permits in a totally residential area is not Rappahannock County.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Yes, ma'am, you're back.
I'm Julia Terrier. I'm from Wakefield, and I live right across the river from where this property is going to be. I'm deeply concerned about my horses, being afraid of gunfire, and my dogs, because occasionally they freeze, and as Chris just said, they won't eat if they hear gunfire. We did put the river into scenic easement. It took quite a while. We'd like that property, that river to stay in scenic easement. We don't want to have the cows right now that are in the riparian area, using the riparian area as feeding ground. We'd like them out of there. I'm also concerned about the noise. And as I've lived in agricultural district in Loud, and one of the reasons I moved from Loud was because the agricultural district is broken up, I'm here facing the same thing again. It makes me quite afraid. And also, I finally paid off my mortgage, and I do not want to see my property values affected. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Back.
Mike Pennick, Piedmont. I'm also opposed to this. I think the number of people that are coming into the property is probably excessive for the size of the property. The, a shooting range, I think, is inappropriate. It would be a commercial-type shooting range because people are paying to come out there to be trained, and it's not the typical homeowner shooting a little bit. And, and the parking, twenty to forty people coming out to the property a couple of days a week is a lot of traffic. Back on that road, and parking problem. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Alexander in Wakefield. Yes, Ellen Wakefield, still. My question is, one, is it a villager's property or not? And two, is it currently zoned? Is it zoned ag or residential?
Zoned ag.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. This is my question. If it's zoned ag, he has a right to shoot on the property regardless of what MWN notices. It's a given. Is that still correct?
Not on a commercial basis. I mean, I think what's before us is the, is the, the question is, he's applying for an event and training facility. It's a question as to whether that is the appropriate use designation. But to be clear, the ordinance does allow that use if that is, if activity fits within that use on agricultural property, subject to this process. Bill? Anyone else care to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commissioners, I'm Gene Clement from the Wakefield District. I noticed in this application that the zoning administrator did not say that this property had been properly advertised. I submit to you that it has not been. The application as advertised says that the applicant has applied for a special use permit for an active shooter training center. The use is allowed pursuant to Code Section one seventy dash thirty-six B, with additional standards under Code Sections one seventy dash sixty-four G and one seventy dash sixty-five D. Now, one seventy dash thirty-six B is defined in the category of uses as community, educational, and institutional uses. If you look at the ordinance and all of the defined possible activities that may be permitted, you will not find one that is consistent with the definition of this application. The zoning administrator has said that this application is filed as a school, public or private, not conducted with inability. If that be the case, then as the applicant has said in the application, it is an application not for a special use permit, but a special exception permit. That is possibly permitted in an SE area, which would come to you and to the board supervisors. Therefore, I submit to you that this application has not been properly advertised, and you cannot properly consider it at this time. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Glenn.
Hey, Mr. Glenn from Jackson District. Here we go again. Agriculture zone, doing commercial, all right? Is it about time we fixed that wonderful little table? And by the way, how, with his business, how much revenue does the county get? Like, nothing? So we're going to sacrifice all these people's homeowners' value and their noise and their quiet, and what does the county get for it? I mean, it's bad enough we hardly get anything from tourist numbers, but what, he doesn't provide sales. He's a consultant. Don't get any sales tax, you know? He'll get the real estate tax, but we're getting that anyway. Whereas, we're going to switch to a commercial use, which it is, all right? We should at least get some value out of it. We could use the tax revenue. Correct, gentlemen, lady? All right? So that's my problem. That's the problem with, with the table in thirty-six. Everything is allowed in agriculture, absolutely everything. You can't, how are we going to meet the comprehensive plan? Their number one thing is agriculture when we turn all agriculture into commercial activities. Where is the enforcement? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, can you ask the name?
Geeroff from Wakefield. My property line, it is property line. Our barns were together when they were separated when I purchased it, but my dog, they just bark incessantly when anyone comes near our property line. I too have paid up my house, and I'm looking forward to repair it and hopefully leave it forever. And, you know, I just do worry about the amount of people that would be coming in. I just think, yeah, I'm worried.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this application? Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm, again, Jim Warwick from St. Louis. I'm on the other side of the department's property from that, so I'm near there. I should have been notified this needs to be announced, but it's not. Anyway... Anyway, in reading in the board docs, the application, apparently it's an application. To me, it's 90% fluff and the rest, which attempts to at least address how it's going to be used, doesn't come to much of anything beyond the various words of training center, et cetera, et cetera, and then mention shooting blanks occasionally. So I don't think the usage proposed for the property is defined anywhere close enough to get many decisions tonight or even consider the application in the future until it's very fully defined with conditions would have to be in there to protect things. But then, besides that, I don't like the idea of having a commercial usage coming in to that area at all. It looks like that's kind of opening the door that I've been worried about for a number of years of decisions of zoning and usage of properties setting a legal precedent that allows somebody else later to take advantage of that. And that's more conjecture than objection to me than just what these people would do with the property. I don't think they've defined in the application at all anywhere close to being necessary what that would be. So I'm completely opposed to, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Irwin.
We have amplified music, we have festivals, we have agricultural machinery, we have barking dogs, and the most egregious sound that I can think of right now would be the sound of a rifle range, would be far worse than anything that we've already authorized. Please, this is a unanimous vote against this application.
Mr. Irwin, would anyone else care to speak on this application? Last call. I hear no further comments, I will hereby close the public hearing.
It's going to be a three-time?
Yeah. By closing the public hearing. So if I may tee up a few of these issues, would you please, sir, address the ownership matter? And you can go ahead and just work on some of the others as well.
Can I?
Please, please address us if you...
Of course, yeah. I'll, through a vision, look at people who made some of the comments. In front of you is our Small Business Association code. There are lots of companies called RSL. Okay, just because there's lots of companies called RSL doesn't mean we're all, I would love to own that company, okay? Over time, I do not own it. We are a small women-owned veteran businesses. If any of you know anything about US Company Contracting to USAID, there was a set aside for small veteran women-owned businesses. You can't exceed a certain size. It's illegal, it's impossible. I have an end of a gel, so do my wife. So I give you evidence here that we are not anything but a very small business that is owned 100% by me and my wife.
So no affiliation to any of these other companies?
No affiliation whatsoever.
Thank you.
Okay, they just have the same acronym or the same name, okay? And there's proof here. So there's one, so hopefully that will make some clear. We've never asked for a firing rate.
Sir.
We've never asked for a firing rate. We don't want a firing rate, okay? We will shoot one or two black rounds. And I provided the technical specifications of black rounds and they come in half-charge, which means it's half noise. We will be very sensitive to not doing in there animals or hogs and we're all happy to move into secluded areas around the corner amongst the woods where the noise will be baffled. We're not going to do it near horses or animals. We want to be good makers, okay? We will not have a firing rate. And if you need to write it into any agreements, we're more happy to sign it because that's not intent. There is zero safety risk. There's no bullets coming out, okay? There is no risk, okay? So you're more at risk from hunters shooting one round than us because we don't bring raw bullets with us. So there is no safety risk. In terms of the traffic, we will be bussing people in. They're not going to be driving themselves in. So they're going to meet us in Manassas, we'll have a small coach, we'll drive in, we'll park in the land, we'll shut the gates, you won't see anybody driving back and forth. At the end of the day, we'll leave, okay? So we're not going to interrupt your traffic or clog your streets, I promise you. The reference to agencies, USAID, okay, USAID, we don't prime USAID contracts because we're too small. We work for people like OFSA, we draw money from USAID, or people like Commodities or DIA. So when we reference working for agencies, we're doing it through prime contractors who are big companies, and then we provide them advice, an online training, and then we train a small handful of their people who come and do not active shooter training and ask you, wipe that from your mind, safety, security, cultural awareness training, okay? First aid, learning how to use a plastic bag to stop somebody bleeding to death, okay? Learning how to use cardboard boxes to split their leg, learning how to negotiate their way out of an aggressive police checkpoint because they're going to rob them or kill them, okay? These people are trying to go and do maternal health projects, they're trying to help kids and women and farming and agriculture in disaster-affected communities, and we teach them how to do that as safe and positive manner. Okay, we're not teaching soldiers or police or anything like that. We're teaching people like you and I, who are going to go out and do good work to stay alive, and if something goes bang, they know how to deal with it. They know not to pick up objects that may be bombs, they know how to hide behind a tree or a car engine block in case of you shooting bullets. You cannot shoot bullets, you would run out of clients very, very quickly if you did that, okay? The comments on our application, forgive me, I'm not a zoning expert. If I've got it wrong or if I used the wrong terminology in our application, it's because I don't understand what to write, okay? We were working with the zoning committee, we were just in the language, nothing is being hidden there. We're all happy to provide any of you the training program that we run, and you can see serial by serial, time by time, exactly what will happen. And you'll find the instances of any noise we've made are limited to a couple of minutes, literally, okay? And if you want, I can tell you what the training program is right here now, okay? And it's very, very limited in terms of noise. And 40 people walking around, 40 acres, you're not going to see them. You're literally not going to see them, okay? We're not going to do any noisy things near property, so we're not going to be near your home, don't worry. We're going to stay around the wooded areas, out of the way, okay? Our goal is to be very, very low impact for you. In terms of bringing revenue, sorry, I keep on looking at people, my apologies. In terms of bringing revenues to the community, yes, we are, because we're going to be asking people to provide food, we're going to be engaging with local businesses, which will feed revenue to the community, okay? We're only going to be doing training one or two days a month when it's not raining. People don't like to be trained when it's wet and cold, okay? During the day only. So it's going to be very, very light training activities. It's not going to be lots of people coming in all the time. It's going to be one or two days a month, if that, during the dry summer periods, okay? If there's any other questions, you know, I respect all of your opinions, especially the few who are in the corner of the room who've got fossils like my arms or my belly, but I would like, I would ask you to make a decision based on the facts, not assumptions, not looking on the website and becoming speculative, so I mean, I respect you, but assuming that we're hiding anything, we're really not, okay? And I've offered anybody to ask me questions and I've provided the training programs and anything you want. If you don't like it, I respect that, okay? But make it on the right conditions, make it for the right reasons, not because you're assuming we're hiding something we're not.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have some additional questions.
Can I make one more?
I think we can close the public hearing on this. I don't think we want to start down that path. Thank you. Ms. Bede, I believe this is in your district. Would you like to start us off?
Sure. I appreciate all the comments tonight. It's helpful when citizens come out and let us know what they're thinking. I do not believe the application was properly noticed under the categories as has been noted tonight, plus I've received notice from one individual who lives across the street that they were not notified and we heard another one was not tonight. With all that said, I agree, while there may be a need for this in the county, I don't think this is the location. There's a tremendous amount of holes in the application. You're encouraging us to make it on fact. In one instance, it's going to be outdoors, in another instance, it's going to be indoors. In one instance, it's going to be mostly blanks. What does mostly blanks mean? It's just a lot of holes in the application that I don't think additional information would change our mind. My concerns are environmental, safety, sound, access, setbacks. It's very close to the road, it's a small parcel, and I don't believe it meets the zoning ordinance standards, and with that, I fully intend to recommend an I.
Thank you, Ms. Bede. Mr. Henry, would you like to...
First off, I would hope that Ron McLeod would extend an apology to this gentleman for his misrepresentation. He started off here tonight, he came up and handed out these brochures to all of the board members here, that was a misrepresentation and not what, who are assumed was, and I would appreciate if you would extend an apology to the gentleman because he deserves it. It was a misrepresentation that should not have been done, should not have been given to us at the last minute, and apparently it has been corrected.
Mr. Jerem, can I respond to that? That's...
No, it's fine. No, it's fine. So, having said that, we'll move on and talk about the application itself. I think probably if you had another name to your business and not had the word "active shooter" in it, you would have probably been received differently and stressed more of the situational situations that you address on an international basis and how you are there to provide assistance and training to different situations, but I think the title kind of sent you down the wrong path and...
You didn't put that title in. That wasn't something we brought you, that's something that happened on the zoning sites. You never said in an active shooter training site.
Yeah. Well, I think that term created something that maybe didn't exist. Having some knowledge of the site, I haven't been on the site before, and I guess this goes back to the history of Mr. Kosevich when he only did the creative problem against Art Bay. It's a pretty tough site and as your neighbor said, you know, your driveway goes down right on the fence, and I recognize the barn there and there was an old house there, I don't know whether that was tore down or not, but it's a pretty difficult site and there's a little concentration of people there. And the reason why we have this hearing is to recognize that not every location is suitable for use. And a number of years ago, we had an application up at Constance Hill for a Montessori school that was met with a massive amount of opposition to the traffic for these reasons. It was a good use and we suggested to the person to come back with another property that had better access and other features and that we would entertain it. This person came back in a couple of months with a better location and we entertained it and approved it that night. So I think with the concerns of the site, restraints there, I think it's, I'm not going to go along with Holly on her recommendation, but I think you have a clean business, you're not creating any pollution, you'll probably hopefully employ some local people. I invite you to look around the county and find another site that's more accessible, maybe a little bit larger acreage, with more buffer, less influence with the neighbors, and we will hopefully work with you for a better outcome.
I feel that there are questions in this application that need to be answered much better than have and that the neighbors are particularly concerned because it seems as if the, what is applied for, albeit shooting blanks, could grow to almost anything else once the application is given. One of the problems we have with this commission and the county is that there isn't a good and easy form of disciplining and accountability for property uses once it is given. And so that as the application now stands, I find it difficult to support. If it could remove all shooting and firing, I think it would have a great deal better chance of getting by the neighbors and their concerns. It seems, other than that, the impact on the neighbors is rather small. And so that what I would say is if that kind of modification could be made, I think it would be a great deal easier to support and I think that the neighbors would not have the concerns that they do. And so that I tend to concur with Holly and Al that this is a difficult application to support as it now stands, but that given the concerns of the local populace and the possibilities that it offers, a modification might be supportable.
Could I ask one question?
Certainly.
We started off this evening with an assumption, and I don't even apologize, it's not a problem, an assumption that mainly the residents, that we were going to set up a firing range, that we were doing certain things that we're not, and we proved that we're not a major corporation, we proved we're not a full firing range. The question about in and outdoor training, we do the indoor training in Manassas because we have a classroom there, and we do the outdoor training, or would have done the outdoor training if we got permission. Could I just maybe suggest, and maybe the answer's still there, based on the clarification points, we have an overarching belief that this shouldn't happen. Now that I've clarified some points and confirmed, this isn't going to happen, we're not a major corporation, we're not going to do live firing, no raw bullets we use, I'm not in any agreement to say we will not shoot blanks. I have to shoot some blanks, that there are swaggy people shooting in dangerous environments. But if we legally agree to do for more than eight minutes in a day, eight minutes, okay, and I'll pay a fine or whatever you want to do if I approve that, if you are happy and content with those things, could we just take another very quick, is everybody still opposed to the fact that there will be one bus coming in, will be contributed to the local community, there will be no live firing, there will be no gun range?
Mr. Boyd, with all due respect and I recognize the desire to get that reaction, I think what you're touching on is part of the challenge with this application and its ambiguity. We find ourselves, I think, as the public and as this commission, trying to draw the boundaries for you. And I think what you're sort of getting at, and I understand that you have time pressures and a certain, you know, decision framework, but with all due respect, I think part of what's here is that the application is very ambiguous and it uses words like "we typically do this, we routinely do that." And I think if, I don't think we'd want to take, you know, get this into a whole process here. I would encourage you, if you are so inclined, to, you know, take what you've heard tonight, revisit these matters, perhaps speak to your neighbors and see if you can affect what would appear to be a better support among your neighbors, but I don't think we want to take the time now and in this place to get into that, please. I'm sorry, we're...
Well, I think you made a very good point and I was pretty much done.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Have you, did you ever discuss with your neighbors your plan?
I did with as many neighbors as I could meet, but I fear that some erroneous information or that obviously colored their opinion and made them think that maybe I was lying to them or something, which is clearly not the case and hasn't been proven. So I did try my best and I invited the neighbors to ask any questions, to clarify any points. The trouble with providing insufficient amount of details, how much detail do people want? You tell your programs, you know, statistics over the years, et cetera. The ambiguity is not intentional. The ambiguity is we don't know how many courses we run because sometimes we don't run any for six months.
Well, I think on that point, the issue here is, is that our purpose is to define those boundaries and we find ourselves, you know, we sit here and taking does something okay, would, you know, would we say, okay, this can be approved if only blanks and only two a day and only one bus? And we, that shouldn't be our job. And I think the, what you're, you've kind of presented the application with respect to sort of a business profile and we look at this from the standpoint of the usage and the impact on neighbors and the limitations that you would be subject... the limitations that you're, that you would be subject to, to protect your neighbors from unwarranted. So I think this is partly how this sort of got off on this track, is you left a bit of a vacuum that's to fill, like all vacuums are. So I think, does anyone have any, Mr. Brown, do you have any further questions or discussion to add, please?
We also listen to the neighbors. Not one of them is in favor of your operation.
I am. I am.
It had one, huh?
It is not unanimous.
Oh, you weren't going?
Someone's saying, yes, this is a great use of this stuff.
She's going to use the, she's going to...
It's not unanimous.
Do you live next to it?
I have a mile of shared property on.
Okay. One, one thing I missed by read best, if I take your train, then what is the object I'm after?
So if you, if you belong to Care International, and there was an earthquake in a foreign country, we would teach you how not to get aggressive by corrupt local officials, how to deal with a medical injury if you had a car crash and there's no medical supplies or resources, using paper bags and plastic bags and twigs and things, because most of the time they don't have a medical kit. We would, we would teach you what to do if there's a significant disorder event, riot or aggression. We would take the women away to do gender security awareness training. And then for four minutes of the day, okay, we would shoot three or four bullets and say, where were you hiding? Okay? And that's the active shooter part. We never put active shooter into any of the documents we provided to the zoning board. But I think that has, has sort of been detrimental to our application, because it's made everybody come here with fear in their hearts.
You'd say you would have lost weight.
No, I, no, I said, no, I said, I said...
I think we, I don't think we're on anything...
No, that's irrelevant, because you guys have denied it so earnestly.
Well, I have a couple of other things I'd like to...
Oh, please.
And no, please, if I'd like to store order, if I may, does anyone who'd like to leave, please, please do so, and do so politely. So were you finished, Mr. Brown? So, picking up a couple of things that haven't been addressed, just thoughts that I think are worth sharing here. It does seem, with respect to the commercial use, that, that this is not an either-or situation. It sounds like the property would have been, with this particular use, the idea would be that it would also continue to be used for agricultural use. So I think that's an interest, a valid point, and I think with respect to these questions about commercial use of agricultural land, part of the reason that's allowed is that, you know, it is often a way to get some additional value while not restricting the, the use from agricultural land, but supplementing. So I just want to make that point, I think, as a, as a general measure here. So, one of the things you haven't really addressed is, and while we're talking about it, I think we should do so thoroughly, were you planning to make any changes to the, the property? I mean, is part of the appeal that it is sort of a front-down property that, that you, you know, that kind of matches the conditions that you'd be entering? Or what is it, what would you be doing to this property, you know, physically with respect to infrastructure, road, or any of those sorts of things?
Well, the only, the only change really we would do today, we would allow cattle to carry a grain, because that will help us, because it's a freeway, you know, not anymore. We'd move away from the river, we don't need land that much, and we're environmentally friendly. In terms of any infrastructure development, one of the plans we would have potentially is to gut the inside of the barn, leave it as it looks, because it's very attractive, it's, it's in the local environment. But then, then make it into a space that people can go to if it's ready. So we would enhance those existing structures, but we wouldn't build anything new.
Is there, is there a residential structure?
No, they burnt it down a few years ago. So we would, we would just enhance the vision of building property. We're not going to be able to build structures and so forth, we would enhance what's already there, and that's it. The appeal is the fact that this tracks, and there's no debate in trade, and there's places where people can be stopped by a policeman and arrested or whatever.
And you feel you would, you would actually use the 40 acres? I mean, were you looking for a property, did you say we need 40 acres to do this or that, or what? How much of the property is actually part of the program?
We've been looking for six months, and we've looked at about 40 different properties, and this is the best one we've found. We don't have much money, we're a small company. Okay, so, you know, we happen to pay 40% of the loan, because the bank doesn't pay for just land. They don't, they don't finance it normally. So we can't afford to go into big acreages. This was kind of the happy medium. The terrain suited what we're after, lots of looks and crannies, and, you know, that was kind of the goal. We'll have to obviously go back to the drawing board and just stop training for a while.
Well, I appreciate your candor and your willingness to respond to questions. I think we've more or less exhausted the, the issues associated with this. I guess maybe we'll turn back to you, Ms. Lee. I do think there's some logistic questions about the actual application. I mean, our, our agenda says special exception, so it seems to me that there are some flaws or some abnormalities, but I don't know that they're, it sounds like what the course we're on, they're, they're sort of immaterial. So I think we should probably proceed to a motion on this, and if there's, if this is to be resurrected in some way, it could be a, a new application. I, I think would be the way I would suggest that we consider this. Does that, does that make sense?
I think that's fine. Including 17065D is probably appropriate in that, given that it is non-shooting range. And that may have been from clarity in the application material, I don't know. 17064G, I'm not sure why that was included, given the numbers of people that are involved with that, and what's being represented here, and they had that clarity again. And so it was likely an attempt to cover all bases, but I don't think that that's really what we're looking for.
Well, and again, I think, to me, part of that issue begins with, I think, we've encountered this, it isn't coming on the applicant to sort of structure the application in a way that is meaningful to us in terms of our ordinance, and I think that's one of the challenges here that we face. So, Ms. Lee, you look like you're poised to propose something.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And the situation is, we do have to act on the material that's been presented to us, and that's what we have for consideration. So with that said, I do not believe the application meets the standards of the ordinance, and I recommend denial.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion?
All in favor of the motion to recommend denial of this special exception, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
To be clear, this is a planning commission recommendation to the next body.
Yes, so this will go to the board of supervisors.
So this body hears and makes a recommendation to the board supervisors on this permit, and the board supervisors would still be positioned to hear the permit and hold their own position.
So in effect, that could give you some additional opportunity to present this, if you so choose.
A lot of times they give jobs that are what we recommend.
I was going to say, you know, for a way to expand, but I guess...
Well, just to make it clear, we are an advisory board, they are the deciding board, you know, this is a record of the board. Thank you very much.
I just want to take a short recess, if anyone would like to, we still have one item, sign ordinance amendment request. So I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We have one more item on the agenda, that being the sign ordinance amendment request. Words of introduction on this matter.
It's my understanding that individual brought this matter to the attention of the board supervisors, the board asked the planning commission to take a look at it. Fire companies, perhaps in total, or one, requested to be exempted from needing a permit. And of course, with 17094M, there are the exemptions for informational direction of signs of historical markers erected by public agencies. They're seeking to have more fire rescue companies added in exception, so that they are not subject to the requirements of changing permits for signs.
Thank you.
And I apologize for not having more information. There are representatives here, and they have additional information.
So this is a little bit unusual, it's more of a, it's not really an application, it's a, it's a request for amendment. But as I said, or at the outset, I think we'll open it up, I think what we'll do is open up for a public hearing and...
Well, so you're not in a public hearing state, you're, at this point, the board has referred it to the planning commission, planning commissions of mind to develop a strike-through version, you will then have a full public hearing on that. This is, I guess, a de facto strike-through version, I do not believe this has been advertised as a public hearing.
Thank you for that clarification. I do, would it be appropriate then to open a public comment period, that we would allow, that we would allow comments? Given that, given the way we started the meeting, I think I certainly implied that there would be an opportunity to speak on me, so I'm inclined to do so, although your point is well taken, and I believe what we're talking about here is, is another...
We can talk about it in conventional period, right?
But I, I assume it would be this, this Senate of the commission to, to let me hear from, from the public? Al, have you been injected?
No, just, 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 you know, we need...
But...
Problem, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, so with that, I'm going to open a public comment, this won't be an official hearing, but, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, Art Kanzankris, Florinusville. I'm here on behalf of the Fire and Rescue Association, and I can provide you with the history of what brought us to the planning commission. Roughly about two years or so ago, one of the fire companies here in the county had submitted a application to replace a sign which was badly, it long lived its usefulness, and needed to be replaced. And so the company submitted a, an application which went to the zoning administrator at the time, and it came back as being rejected, saying that it didn't meet the ordinance. And at that point, the then zoning administrator, who preceded our current zoning administrator, in a discussion, he talked to the common, the county attorney, to get an opinion on just what was going on. Mr. Goff returned, and this, again, I don't really want to talk about the realm of hearsay, but in any event, the county attorney talked to the Zen zoning administrator, and in his words, the section dealing with the sign ordinance, in his words, it was very vague, and it would be very difficult to enforce. So it was the county attorney who suggested that the way to address this issue was to apply for a text amendment that would exempt the fire rescue companies with the idea that the, whether it was the board, or whether the zoning administrator, or whoever it was, would review this particular section of, I guess it's part, what, or part of chapter 170, and at some time down the road, they may tighten words, or make it in such a way that it would be more enforceable and less vague. So at that point, it was brought to the attention of the Fire Rescue Association, and they in turn authorized me as secretary to submit a request to the county administrator to bring it to the attention of the board of supervisors. And that was done in November. The board then, in November, recommended that it be forwarded to the planning commission. And it was on your agenda for the 20th of December, of course, you didn't have a quorum, so the meeting wasn't held. In the meantime, it has now appeared on the docket for this evening. What this is, what this envisages, and this would not just affect just one particular fire company, but all of them in general, in addition to, well, let me back up, the technology is such that the signage would be able to be controlled through computers and so on and so forth. There had been a discussion between the then zoning administrator and the county attorney as far as what size, and it was a suggestion that was made that the maximum size allowed would be 10 feet by 10 feet. Keeping in mind that VDOT has its own restrictions as far as signage which could cause a distraction or create a public nuisance or something along those lines, the Fire Rescue Association is cognizant of all that, as well as the feeling in the county about the dark skies and so on. And obviously, fire rescue want to be good neighbors. In addition to providing information to the public about activities of the companies, it's envisioning to be able to use these illuminated signs, and there would be no scrolling, no animation, none of that business. It would be in the interest of public safety. And this would be for amber alerts, silver alerts, weather warnings, things of that nature, which would bring it to the attention of the public. We've had two instances where these signs could have been of a value. One, of course, was the female firefighter from Fairfax who disappeared until later on, when her remains were found in the park. And the other was the individual in Sperryville, an elder gentleman who also disappeared, and was the focus of a rather intense search, looking for this individual. And of course, unfortunately, his remains were found, but the body were being not too far from where he lived. So the idea is, in addition to using these signs to promote activities, fundraisers and dinners and such for the companies, in the event that there would be something of a nature, especially an imminent nature to the public, we could then put these amber alerts, silver alerts, weather warnings, whatever it happens to be, in the interest of public safety. And so that was the other part of this. So that gives you a little history of, of what is behind it. As I said, keeping in mind that we don't want to have a lot of flashlights and such like that, which are, again, prohibited by VDOT as, as far as these signs are in a relationship to a public highway. And so that's a little bit of the history that has gone on behind it. Whether or not the planning commission or the board of supervisors and the zoning administrator are going to take a longer look at that particular signage, that, of course, would be up to you all to decide. But the thing is, by having this exemption, in the case of a couple of companies where they have to replace existing signage and such, this would give them the opportunity to do that. You know, keeping in mind that it requires to be a certain size and so on and so forth, so that's the history behind it.
Would you just clarify for me?
Yes, sir.
A couple of years ago, and then you said Goff in...
Well, initially, when the...
So I'm confused with time.
Okay, initially, it had gone to Debbie Kaiser, and she turned it down. And then the company submitted another application to Dave Dammel. And, or, let me put it just like, they were going to submit. And so the question was, what is it in the application that the company needed to do in order to meet the ordinance? And it was then that Mr. Goff came back to Dave Dammel and said that the ordinance was very vague, and in most cases, it would be very difficult to try and enforce it. And so that's what led then on to going on from there. So the company had made a good faith effort to try and meet the requirements under part 170, or chapter 170. And it just seemed, according to the county administrator, county attorney, that it was almost impossible, no matter what it is that the company did, that it may not exactly meet exactly, because it was vague. And in his words, it was very difficult to enforce it.
Mr. Chairman, I think you can go ahead and report for this.
No, I believe...
That's the history of it.
Well, I believe we opened this up, I think, if there's anyone else in the public who has any comment on this, we said we hate them. Is there anyone who would like, anybody here? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ron Mackler from Jackson District. My career was in firefighting, so I'm well aware of what these people do, and I appreciate what they're doing. But people didn't move to Rappahannock to have these types of signs. This is one of the things that, you know, that's why we're here. And in going back in a little ways in history, we signed... And in going back a little ways in history, the sign, the school system was exempt, and they chose to put up a sign which, if you talk to people in the county or whatever, there's, there's not a lot, you know, there's, there's any support for it, there's a lot of people that don't support it. It's not something that people, particularly in the county, particularly, I mean, they're lit up at night, I mean, it's just, it's just not something that we want. And actually, I would suggest if you're actually going to look at this ordinance, that the better way to travel would be to go back and say that the county also has to conform to the sign ordinance. Everybody has to, and that would, you know, I mean, and yes, they can't apply for exemptions through the sign ordinance, but that would take a public hearing, and people would be able to get up and express themselves and everything. If you exempt them, that takes the public out of the process, and I might add that the fire companies are private corporations, they're not government agencies, they're private corporations, and what you might be doing is opening up the door in that, you know, they do good work in the community or whatever, well, the churches do good work in the community, and they might come forward and say, we would like to put up a sign. And suddenly, we will have, you know, or we have the potential for video signs throughout the county, and I don't think there's going to be much support for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I'm Scott Chamberlain, I've been with the Amesville Fire Department since 1978. I was there when we put in that sign that we have in front of the station now, which is a fluorescent sign, it's dual-sided, so that people can see what's going on in the community there. I can tell you that that sign's been there since the 80s. It has been lit up on both sides since the 80s. Currently, we have an older gentleman who has to go out and raise that cover every time and change each letter and set up all the signs, technology's changed. So obviously, this isn't an issue about lumens or size, I don't even, we don't even want to put up a bigger sign than what's there. Current, well, we want to replace the sign we have that's been there since the 80s, that's extremely expensive to maintain because we have to keep going through and putting all these parts in it and try to keep it running. We want to put something up that will better inform the public, that's it, just better inform the public. Mr. Kandankis laid out everything, all of the reasons why, the amber alerts, silver alerts, all those things, I won't beat to death for that, but a programmable sign makes so much more sense, and in this day and age, you know, it's what you're going to purchase. Not too happy if we're going to go out and try to purchase fluorescent signs, they're wasteful electricity, and they don't, they don't give your message in a clear format. Lumens can be dim, you can, you can adjust the lighting levels, particularly of the newer signs, much more so than I can with a fluorescent sign, I can't do the, with a fluorescent sign. And I can also tell you that when our siren, our half siren finally died, you know, we had a siren up there from the 50s, we had to finally change it out. You have to eventually replace something, you can't keep it forever. We've tried this thing, we've tried to maintain, we would like to continue to inform the public about what's going on in our station, or what's going on in our community, that's what we want to do, and we'd like your help with that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Phil Lurwin, Front Hill, I'm on the board of Cedar, Virginia, and we have agreed as an organization that the most egregious, upfront to the beauty of the Commonwealth of Virginia, is the clear-cut corridors for transmission lines and gas pipelines and so forth through the woods, that really marries the countryside tremendously. And in solid second place, it's billboards, signage. Signs don't belong in a picture of scenic beauty, you look at any photo contest that we have and you will never see a billboard in it, unless it's used as a worst possible example. Billboards have been trying to be authorized by the General Assembly in two bills this past session, and both bills were voted down. Billboards are the most egregious thing that we can have. I am very sympathetic to fire companies and rescue societies, being an EMT myself, but we don't have any hope that in the future, there might be some type of billboard that like these electronic ones that resemble a television set. Those things are a safety hazard as you drive by it. If you drive by the high school, you're tempted to look at that little red sign in front of the high school, and what that does to take your attention off the road. Any type of billboard and advertising is a potential danger, and I am very much opposed to any blanket restriction, I beg your pardon, lifting of any blanket restriction that we have at the present time, simply because they're a fire company. They can do very well with the three-by-four sign, there's a wonderful one right in front of the Front Hill Firehouse that they can update anytime if they want to. They don't need an electronic one, they don't need backlit one, they don't need bright lights on it and so forth. We have an emergency alerting system in this county that works very nicely on the phone. Please, you know, let's, let's keep Rappahannock County a beautiful place, and it doesn't include the unlimited ability to put a sign up.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in the public? All right, I'm going to close the public comment period. Can I turn to my right, Mr. Berg, do you want to start us off on this topic?
I guess what occurs to me is that we need to rewrite that paragraph to articulate exactly what we want. As it is now, it seems to mean any number of different things, perhaps the only thing that's exempted is some kind of advertising for business. And I think that this is something that perhaps if we could communicate with the fire departments and then rewrite the paragraph accordingly, that would be what we should do.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah, I think the question there is, you know, if the, if the, if the ordinance is not sufficiently clear, the question is, do you exempt somebody from having to go through the process, or do you make the process more clear? I guess the question here is, you know, do we, would we wish to take ourselves completely out of the conversation? But, Mr. Brown, did you have anything to add?
No. I think a balance would be nice to try to not simply not have them follow the ordinance, but maybe come up with some language as has been suggested that would work for the county, the concerned citizens, just a balance of what we've heard tonight.
Mr. Hannigan, would you say a bit?
I think it's kind of supervisors sent it over to us, recognizing that this needed to be addressed. I think what the fire rescue, the history of what's been said, and what they're trying to do, and what they do in the community is very reasonable in their request to be included as an exempt agency. So I'm inclined to present along the line of an exempt agency as same as a school or a public agency would have that right in Rappahannock County. So I think it should be presented.
Well, thank you, I guess, I, my view with all respect to the, the fire departments, I think the sign at the school was a, was a major mistake. I don't really want to see us start kind of a visual appeal race to see who can grab your attention more. You know, if we were talking about something that was only going to be available for amber alerts or public service, I think it would qualify in the, in the category of exemption that this is intended for. So again, with all due respect and support of what the fire department's doing, I feel like the process that we have would allow us to consider that balance between the, you know, the visibility of whatever kind, I mean, if we exempt them, we're basically taking ourselves out of the picture entirely and perhaps reverting to whatever VDOT might require. But I feel like this sign ordinance has served us quite well, and with apologies that perhaps there was some ambiguity during this time of transition, I don't see why we would want to have a carve-out for this particular organization. I think I'm compelled by the sentiment about, you know, churches and other organizations that would show up with the same request. So while I'm sympathetic about the challenges of getting the sign replaced, and I'm inclined to work with that, I am opposed to the blanket exemption of fire departments from the, from the ordinance. So that's my view on that.
Mr. Chairman, just note that it's likely that the issue in the past was linked to the definition of animated sign. Perhaps that's something the planning commission wants to look at.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to enforce for staff once you venture into this area. So this is, changes alternating not less than one hour cycle, so...
Yeah.
You can have a zoning official out there with, you know, their stopwatch, and it ends up being a problem.
So, five minutes, do you recall, is that, was that sort of the matter of ambiguity? I think that the question was not ambiguous about this paragraph that we're proposing changing, it was, it was the definitional stuff that was...
Yeah, my understanding from Mr. Goff was, and through Dave Dammert, was that the wording was very vague, and that was his word, and that it would be difficult to actually enforce it. I just want to point out that we're not looking at billboard type of lights or anything that goes there. But on the same token, we just felt that in the interest of public safety and getting a message out and such, at the same time, it had the possibility of advertising, if you will, or notifying the public about different company functions and such like that. But there was a question in terms of, you know, as far as the size and this and that and everything else, and so it was, in that particular case, very vague, and it was difficult to...
If I may add a little bit of clarity, the animation portion was exactly what was being questioned at that point. And animated signs, too. And we told them, we told them at that time, there's no, there's absolutely no intent making an animated sign or one that is going to cause any issues. Again, it's actually prescribed on the highway by VDOT, it's not even allowed. We weren't looking to do that, we were looking for a programmable sign so that we wouldn't have to continue to fight the climate at that point.
Well, and I respect and appreciate that, I think the challenge for us though, I mean, sort of trying to admit our responsibility here for the sort of the planning and use and, you know, the, the non-public safety aspects of this, I think to just write an exemption in there totally writes us out, writes everybody else out of it, and there would be nothing that would prevent you from, you or your successors, from changing your mind if you were about an animated sign or...
We should provide which are there, we could provide which are there.
Well, not if you, not if you just make an exemption as proposed, so maybe I misunderstood what you were getting at, I thought you were... What I'm, I'm not opposed to revisiting and trying to clarify and fix the, the, the ordinance so that it's not ambiguous and so the fire departments and everybody also have an easier time reviewing it. What I'm specifically opposed to is dealing with this problem by just taking fire departments out of the discussions, that they can do whatever they choose to because our zoning ordinance is vague, which, which if this language were adopted as presented, would be precisely what we want to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that, I think the initial intent from the county attorney was that the exemption would be placed in there so that any of the companies which had an issue, in this particular case with the one company where the sign is beyond health in terms, it has to be replaced. The purpose for the exemption was to hold place so that the companies could replace signs or fix them in such a way that it would work until such time as either the planning commission, BZA, or the board could revisit the section, the code section, and...
For better clarity.
Yeah, for better clarity and straighten it out. Because as it is right now, the, the, in the one particular case with the company, the sign can only be seen during the daytime, it's not illuminated, it's beyond hope, and so it kind of defeats the purpose of having the sign out there where it could be illuminated at night. It's, it's far exceeded its, you know, service length, and so the company wanted to replace that, and that's where we ran into problems, and that's, again, there's some other companies in the county which are, you know, facing the same situation.
Right, and I appreciate and respect that, I guess the, it seems from my perspective, you know, to change the ordinance temporarily while we work on making other changes to the ordinance is, is, is sort of ill-advised, I mean, if this, because there's...
I don't know what you're saying, I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, what's before us...
Are you saying no to any change, or what are you saying, work on it next year, what are you saying, Gary?
I'm saying, I'm opposed to a blanket exemption to all of our sign restrictions to fire departments, which is what is on the table before us.
Okay, so if you are for that, you would then need to have a timetable to provide something else that they could go by. See, what you're doing is just saying, maybe sometime in the future, we might do something somehow.
No, there's, there's a process for applying for these things, there may have been guidance on, on what is ambiguous. Who is, is the zoning administrator the one who, does this, do these things, these are not special?
Yes, zoning administrators are empowered to interpret the zoning ordinance. Although I do not believe the fire department currently falls under any exemption, and so therefore, they would be able to have any sign they want that meets the code. So whether there are questions on what an animated sign is or is not based on the code is laid out pretty decently here with changes alternating not less than one hour cycle, et cetera, but there are also size limitations, so those limitations may not be in keeping with what the fire department wants.
Well, in which case, I think doing something other than exempting any tool, you know, any size sign could be pointing to...
Yes, sir, our problem was that we actually applied for a permit with a full set of plans that had everything outlined, including lumens and how it could be turned down, the size and all of that. And we were referred back here because of that animation portion that you were discussing. So kind of a circus rhythm is involved, you know, which, which one comes first? Are we going to apply for a permit or change the ordinance, or apply for a permit or change the ordinance? I don't know, you know, that's how we ended up here. We're still just trying to get this so that we can advertise dinners and let people know what's going on. But we are, you know, we, we did the full application, we turned everything in, including the sign, size, the lumens, all of that. That wasn't discussed, there wasn't an issue with that because it was replacing the sign that we have currently. The issue was animation, now we're back to what we're going to...
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
When I, hearing that that's the case, then what I wish would be for us tonight was actually your application so that if the, if the interpretation of what the sign is, is sufficiently ambiguous that the zoning administrator didn't feel confident making the call, I would be perfectly happy to have this body take a look at that application. I think that's a much better path forward than cutting the restriction and giving the fire departments carte blanche to create any kind of sign they want to.
I think the board referred this to the planning commission to consider with the fire company's desire, and then probably working in concert with the fire companies, determine how best to modify the code to suit that for consideration by the policies.
Okay.
And I think what we're saying is it does, and I think there's some more creative solutions that would get them what they want and not, yeah.
The size may also be, I'm not sure.
Sorry, since I started this, I'll, I'll keep it going a little...
Well, let's, let's slow this thing down, we're creating a bureaucracy here that's going to, that's going to be greater than the company's plan.
That's a bit rhetorical.
No, it's not, thank you, Christ, Gary, they're changing the signs, so they can do a sign, you know, if they...
Have an entire ordinance about signs, sir.
Well, you know, I know, books have been written about signs, you know, they're already there. You know, let's look at a default situation, a default situation, if fire companies go out of business, the county is in the fire department business, so then they're exempt, okay?
Thank you for...
Yeah, so let's quit beating around the bush, try to do something to help them to address their problems instead of putting up road barriers to them. They're doing good work every day, Gary, they do a community service every day. They're a nonprofit, you know, a nonprofit, they put in their time and money. So do churches, let's, let's work with them, you know, we put money to their budget, let's work with them so they can continue to support us the way they do.
Couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more.
Now, whether that is to get a couple of them involved with us, to come up with something, we're not the dictators here, we're working with them.
Well, I'm not sure where you're coming from, but because...
I'm coming from, it's 10:30, I'm coming from the fact, it's 10:30 and we've talked about this for 40 minutes. We had an excellent presentation here from the gentleman from Amesville. We understand what's going on and here we're talking about it for 40 minutes. So take us on up to midnight, Gary.
Excuse me, sir, but I believe you were the one who extended our break if you want to talk about the timing. Now listen, the request, the request is to actually add language to the ordinance. So, you know, to talk about that we're making it thicker. So I propose that we have the application before us. I, you know, I, I'm absolutely in favor of working with them. What's before us is a proposed change to the zoning ordinance, which I don't agree with. So that's where we are. So I would entertain a motion if you have a clear idea of how you'd like to go forward. I've expressed my view. I think, and it sounds like Miss Me agrees, we should, we should engage and try to fix this in some way other than to simply say, well, this is ambiguous, so let's just write the fire department's affidavit.
So the county attorney couldn't determine, the zoning administrator couldn't determine, and the board of supervisors couldn't determine the validity of the, of the application, but we are.
No, they've, they've deferred it to us because we are in an advisory role.
Because they couldn't make up their mind.
So I believe what's before us should be the consideration of the sign. And that's not here before us. What's before us is the changes...
Mr. Chairman, can I just get a point of clarification? The application was... If we resubmit that to the zoning administrator and such and start this process all over again, would that address the issue? I, I just don't know.
Well, obviously we're not...
So I've not seen the application. It would go to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator is empowered to interpret the ordinance, read it and compare it to what's being requested. If it's not in keeping, then it would likely be denied. Your opportunity is there to appeal to the BZA.
Just one comment on what, what you're proposing to do is make it a single exemption, but it would be precedent setting and I think before that takes place, it would behoove the board to know how many of those signs exist in the county, because there are a lot of backlit signs. If you allow one group to change their sign, you've allowed them all to change their signs and that could lead us down a road we don't want to go down. So that's, that's, I mean, it's a big problem. And, but we've, we've got to be sure that we don't make a mistake. Let me clarify. The process here, if the commission to determine the best way to solve this, you would prepare a modified ordinance for consideration by the planning commission to determine whether you're okay with being advertised for public hearing. You would advertise it for public hearing. Public would review it and speak to whether they think it's good or bad. You would maybe make a recommendation onto the board supervisors, they would have a public hearing. Public would then speak to the board, let them know whether they think it's good or bad and ultimately the board would vote, determine whether they're going to change the ordinance or not. So nothing can be, can happen very quickly relative to this change and the public will have plenty of opportunity to comment. Question is, what would, what would the planning commission think is the best thing to put before the public for them to comment if a change is necessary?
Thank you. I guess my view of it is if the fire department could bring us their plans through the zoning commissioner by the next month's meeting, we could look at the plan, see what it said and either approve it or dis, not approve it, and they could get going next month.
Did you just hear what he said? We can't do that. So we have no review over signs.
See, if you saw the application, it may better inform you of how this needs to change.
But we can't vote and approve any signs.
I, I think if the zoning administrator, if the zoning administrator is having difficulty interpreting...
I don't know that this zoning administrator has ever seen this permit.
So that, that is my point. If, if we have a new county administrator, a new zoning administrator, maybe in, working with them, that Gary has a different opinion.
Yes, it seems like the solution doesn't fit the problem is, is my concern with before. So I guess that would be my question.
So as far as I'm concerned, I'm happy to look at the application with the zoning administrator before it's ever submitted.
Okay, right. That would be my...
We have to go through the process.
And we appreciate that, but just to be clear, this came in this direction because we were told to bring it.
I totally did. And the last thing I wanted to...
We were not a company.
And believe me, I, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that I'm being perceived as somehow being opposed to fire and rescue. You know, I just want to do this right. I don't want to do the expedient thing because of the, of, you know, because sort of giving you a path out of this whole thing would be, would be possible. So I appreciate your indulgence and yours, Mr. Henry. Is there anything else on this matter or can we move on?
So as far as action, what we say, the zoning administrator will review the former application and based on that make a recommendation to the planning commission next meeting on how best to modify the code if it's necessary. That would, that would be great to do.
I'm going to entertain a motion to that perspective. Do you want Miss Me?
I don't, I don't know the one.
You don't know the one? Okay.
Not the zoning administrator, he gets to tell it.
Well, that I believe concludes the business before us this evening. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Send that.
Thank you.